Hi, John. How are you?
Good for you.
Oh, my God.
Nice to see you guys.
We got the, we got, we. You see my tribute, John?
No, no.
Oh, let's see. Wait, let's see here.
Always. It looks like you're in someone's barn, Bill.
Yeah, it's where.
It's Mother's basement.
Yeah. This is it. So, John, you're, you're, weren't you gonna, originally, we're gonna have to go to.
Arlington, but they've continued that till, till the beginning of August.
Oh, good. Hi, Natalie. Welcome.
Bill, for a second, I thought you were actually there.
Yeah, just wishing.
Yeah, I'm in the basement. You mean, oh, other Bill?
Yes, other Bill, sorry. You actually are in a basement, huh?
Let's try to keep me.
Well, there must be a reason for that, Mr. Nemza.
Yeah. There's Angelo. Hello, Angelo.
Oh, you can hear and see me?
I can see you. Yeah.
I promised to try to do this without ruining it. I have not done a multiple-person Zoom meeting, so you'll have to bear with me, but.
Well, we're getting to be pretty.
A lot of fun, Angelo, just we can't wait.
See, can I just hit mute whenever I don't want to listen to what you're saying?
You can't help but listen to us. It's just a matter of you can mute yourself.
I think Bobby will be on shortly.
Yeah, they were on last, they know, they've used this.
Yeah, they were explaining it to me earlier today.
Okay. Hi, John. Hi, Trish. John.
Nice to see you.
And how is everybody? Oh, look at, we're filling up now. Andrew. Andrew. Andrew and Greg, Danny.
Bill, you never thought you had so many fans, did you?
Very popular.
Hey, John, you have to look up and smile occasionally.
I will, I will. On occasion, on occasion.
John, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Greg is there? I see Greg. There's Danny and Bill, okay. And how many do we have? We have one, two, three, four. There's Greg. Hi, Greg.
Hello, guys. Dals, everyone.
I think we have, let me see. We have everybody? I think we do. Oh, Chris. Chris, are you here?
Doesn't look to be.
Well, we have a quorum if you want to get started, but you want to wait a minute? Here's Victor. Oh, we did Victor and.
We got 6:29, so let's wait for.
I, my clock is fast, that's why I'm never late. Hi, Victor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Volume up a little bit. I'm using my earphones to hear.
Very nice.
Just in case the thunder comes rumbling through.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, Angelo, can you move your camera so I can see the whole TV behind you? Because this meeting could be pretty boring.
I didn't know whether you wanted to watch Fox or CNN, so I sort of tilted it.
Oh.
The switch back and forth. Split screen.
He's sitting in behind me directly.
Uh, we should get going and we'll just maybe just start with the minutes or see if Chris is able, no, Chris is with us, I think. I see his name.
Okay, Chris, are we expecting Gary Victor?
I thought he was gonna try to get on. I know he was on, he was on a, in a meeting all afternoon, so he may be just, he may be just trying to get a little bite before the meeting starts.
All right, we, yeah, we can do whatever. We have a quorum, Greg, and we can't start the public hearings, that's all.
Sure.
We can do the minutes if you want to do it. We can get right into this while we have, we can get right into Parker.
Sure, let's, let's get going. So, call to order this meeting of the Manor Planning Board. Today's July 14th, 2020. It's 6:32. And I believe we have a full board at this time, and I wanted to welcome Natalie Roberts to the board, our new alternate. Welcome, Natalie. Congratulations on your first meeting. It's gonna be a good one. All right, so we've got three sets of minutes. We can just jump on those right away. We've got May 26th, June 9th.
I'm good on the 19th, May and 26th, May. I didn't have a chance to look at 6, June.
6, 9. I had no comments myself.
I'm good with the minutes.
No comments.
So, Bill Crenshaw, would you, should we defer? Maybe we can pick up 6, 9, like later in the meeting or something?
No, I'm fine. I mean, there's a majority that looked at it and they're fine. Go ahead.
He falls into our trap.
All right, so I'd like to move that we approve the meeting minutes from May 19th, May 26th.
Nope, sorry.
May 26th and June 9th.
Second.
All in favor by voice vote, please. Aye.
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 All right, guys, thank you. Minutes approved. And let's see here. So, we do have a couple of public hearings, but as Bill mentioned, we're not gonna start those until 7:00. I think I'm on a skip agenda item one. We did item two. And go right to item three, update by the Capital Group on the sewer cost reimbursement and hours of construction. I guess maybe before we dive in, I guess, a little preface. So, this is not a hearing. This is a, an update. And I've been notified by town council that there are some, you know, concerning interactions going on regarding the payment of a a portion of the sewer cost, which was a condition of approval of the special permit and agreement at the time of the negotiation of that permit and, you know, a number of other pieces of the project. And so, really, this is an opportunity. It's a, it's a, it's a discussion, really, at first. And I've seen, you know, various points of view presented. We're gonna have an opportunity to go over some of those things, but I just wanted to, prior to really diving into it, in the, in the interest of time and that we've got, you know, an extensive meeting ahead of us, I just want to make sure that we carefully preface the conversation with a a bit of a review of process here and sort of what our options are, what our role is in this process. And, and sort of a series of options, I guess, that the board has to resolve the matter or, you know, advance the resolution of this matter. Maybe I'll just maybe turn it over to Bill for a quick kind of high-level summary of where he's at, what he sees on this project, kind of what we, what we can expect to hear, and I think what some of the potential outcomes could be from this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason for this item is, if you recall, when the 129 Parker Main Crossing project was under construction, a Mass Works grant was secured for the great majority of the sewer work on the project. At the time of the decision, there was a rough split agreed to between the developer and the town. The developers' representatives and the towns' engineers worked on it and came up with a general proportionate split. The final work and billing was done about the first of this year. And there has been inability to reach an agreement on what the proportionate share of the developer's expense will be for the project. Because of that, we, the staff has been working as hard as we could to try to get this resolved. There's been a number of meetings. There's been a number of emails going back and forth and conversations and stuff, but it definitely seems that we're in a impasse. Last week, town, special town councilor John Witten, who's here tonight, had sent a letter and there was a a deadline to make the payment for the, what the town believed was their sewer proportion. Deadline was not met, and because of that, there's a question about the consistency with the decision. And I think that catches it up. I have, if on board docs, if those are on board docs, there's a memo that kind of outlines sequencing as well to.
Thanks, Bill, and maybe, John, if you're able to kind of give your preface, and I think most importantly, to advise the board on what our role is here, what our powers are, what our options are, I guess, and, and what your recommendations might be for moving forward.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. So, Attorney Catozero and I have been in contact via email, and on behalf of the board, as Bill said, I provided a deadline for a payment of the outstanding sum, which is well over $200,000 for last week. That deadline was not met, and now the question is, what does the board want to do about the failure of the applicant to pay? And the applicant is disputing the amount that the town claims is due. My opinion is, this isn't a negotiation. The planning board approved a special permit for this project with cooperative efforts on all sides. Town meeting, over 1,400 people attended town meeting to create a zoning district for this particular project. And the town has shown nothing but cooperation to get this project off the ground. And the project is well off the ground. It's, it's near completion. The negotiation with the applicant as part of the special permit that the planning board granted was, it's condition 30, was a 33% match that would be paid by the applicant for sewer infrastructure. The conditions in the special permit provide the basis for that 33% number. And that was a test that the United States Supreme Court articulated many years ago, called uniquely and specifically attributable. Meaning, the applicant would pay its pro rata share of the sewer costs that were uniquely and specifically attributable to their project. That was the support for the 33% contained in condition 30, which the board approved. The 33% of condition 30 is the number that is owed, the amount that is owed. There is no negotiation or discussion, in my opinion, about the findings the board reached in condition 30. That ship sailed years ago. If the applicant was not comfortable with that number, which of course they were, because they negotiated with you, with the town. If they weren't comfortable with that requirement, they had the right to appeal. They didn't. That condition is now set in stone. So, the question before the planning board is, now what is the enforcement on an applicant that refuses to pay based on a condition that was negotiated? And the condition is now, has the force of law. So, the planning board has several options. One is, and the chair has asked for my recommendation, and this is both an option and a recommendation. I believe the board should advertise for a public hearing in September or October to consider the revocation of the special permit. That is DEFCON 5. That's about as aggressive an option as you could take. But frankly, the applicant has ignored every good faith outreach from the town to make payment, and I don't know any other option. Intrum options are to withhold any further building permits or occupancy permits. And then the most obvious option, which for, for the life of me, I can't understand why the applicant doesn't see it, is the applicant is gonna be asking town meeting to amend either the bylaw or the concept plan. And I can't imagine a voter at town meeting isn't gonna say to the chair of the planning board, "Mr. Chairman, does the applicant owe the town any money?" And the chair is gonna say, "Yeah, well over $200,000." Now, how that's gonna lead to a 2/3 vote required by town meeting to get the petition passed, I don't know. So, I can't understand for the life of me why, after all this time, after everybody on this call who's aware of the calculations that went into this, there is a debate over what's owed. There isn't. And Wayne's on the call, Stantec's been involved, all these numbers have been analyzed. And I would say finally, Mr. Chairman, that condition 30 and the legal support behind condition 30 is not negotiable before the board right now. The only way to negotiate a change to condition 30 is to open up the permit. And that is obviously not before the board. So, the options are to do nothing. I don't recommend that. Another option is to withhold any further issuances of building or occupancy permits for 30 days with the hope that that will convince the applicant to pay. And simultaneously, the board should, in my opinion, or I recommend, advertise for a public hearing to revoke the special permit and put that out far enough so that the applicant can comply with the past due payments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. So, just to be clear for everybody, some of those actions, I think, are need, would, would need to be formalized. Some would be, I would assume, such as, you know, hearing changes, modifications, things of that nature would be, you know, kind of on an as-needed basis, I think, right? I mean, I don't know, Bill, if we've got anything immediately before us, either tonight or on future agendas, that you know, I'm not keeping tabs on all that, but I know that we've got, you know, various and sundry small things, you know, minor changes and things of that nature that, you know, are to be considered. And then, I guess, you, John, you had mentioned also building permits and occupancy permits, which is, my understanding would be a recommendation to the building commissioner that, an action that he could take. And my understanding is that he's aware of this matter and I, well, may, maybe, Bill, you can relay to us any communications you've had with Rick on this matter.
Rick is surprised he's up to, up to date on, on everything, and he's been in pretty much every step of the way on it.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just add to that point on the building commissioner. The, the project is out of compliance with the special permit while the money is owed. And if it's out of compliance with the special permit, the building commissioner cannot issue further permits. So, it's becoming a self-fulfilling prophecy here. If the applicant refuses to pay, the applicant is putting the town in an intractable position. I don't see the building commissioner having much choice here. And, and again, and I would just want to say, and I, I don't mean to be, you know, argumentative or dogmatic. There, there is not discussion available to the board about condition 30. That discussion should have taken place years ago. The, the underlying purpose of condition 30 is crystal clear, and that is a negotiated 1/3 payment. And how the town and the planning board arrived at that is not up for discussion. It's been arrived at. It's set in stone. There was a 20-day appeal period that went and came and gone. It is now part of the governing principle of this project. And the applicant either pays or it doesn't pay. And if it doesn't pay, it is in violation of the special permit, a serious violation, because it's money. It's not a trivial thing. And because of that, the building commissioner will then no longer be able to issue permits, occupancy, or building for this project. And, and I know the applicant knows this. Why this is even a discussion, frankly, I don't understand. Stantec has provided support for their numbers. Wayne has provided support for their numbers. Condition 30 speaks for itself. That's it.
Thank you, John. So, so everyone, I guess there is a substantial amount of information backing up the town's position. We also, this evening, were in receipt of, and, and they're, over the past few weeks, have received correspondence from, from Capital Group as well with, you know, their information, and I definitely want to give them an opportunity to speak here in a moment. But I guess what I'm concerned about is that, I just want to impress upon the board and get some feedback on the fact that there's a limit to how we can act at this moment. And the, there is a venue, a process that we can engage where we could have a full debate, a public hearing of, of all of the facts. And I don't necessarily think that that is appropriate for right now. I think that there, it's very detailed, and, you know, I do think that not only do we need some time, but also, given that, you know, a public hearing is, is the venue to move forward with this, I just want to ask the other board members, you know, how much do you want to hear tonight, basically? Because we do have an option to, you know, set, set forth a process, prepare, review, hear it, hear the public in due time. I mean, there, there would be, also need to be a discussion about how we act in the interim, because as John says, the, the special permit is in violation currently. That's, that's town council's opinion. And that should or does impact, you know, the, the conducting business in, in the meantime. So, you know, there's a, there's a discussion about the timing of it all. You know, I understand the merits perhaps of scheduling a hearing for, say, a month or two to prepare things, but then we just need to be aware of what that's gonna mean in the interim period. So, you know, I'd like to be able to hear from the board and then be able to kind of, you know, ask the applicant to give their response, but in an appropriate way, given that we may or may not be, you know, undertaking a more thorough review of the materials. Any, any thoughts from other board members?
I have a question for Justin, because condition 30 says that the Director of Public Works gets to determine the total cost from which the percentage is calculated. And so does he agree with the numbers we saw today that end up totaling 202, 108 and 50 cents? Is that the number now?
Good, good evening, Bill. This is Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. Yes, everything that has been presented has been vetted through my department, reviewed thoroughly with myself, Stantec, Wayne Amico, who's been part of the project since the beginning. We did have some discussion on the original number. Met one more time, looked at it, reviewed based off of some of, some of 129 Parker Capital Group's concerns. And the recent letter and number that we presented to them is a finalized number approved by the DPW Director, myself.
Thank you for that. And then, so Greg, my only other comments are, I'm fine with advertising the public hearing for revocation and notice to the building inspector that it's not in compliance, and so no more permit should be issued.
What else can we say? It sounds like it is just cut and dried, clear on the face of it, and, you know, I think are exactly what Attorney Witten and Bill has just seconded, I agree with. We need to advertise the hearing and proceed to enforce regulation and laws as is.
Chris, Jim, any, any thoughts? I'm inclined to turn the floor over to Capital Group with the predicate that, you know, we're gonna spend about 10, 15 more minutes on this and consider a motion for opening a public hearing, at which time we'll have ample opportunity to review all the details.
Greg, I have just one comment here. And that is, we're talking about the withholding of both building permits and occupancy permits. But on the projects that are already going forth, most, if not all the work, other than the shell, has been done by the prospective tenants. And we're gonna be penalizing them not to penalize Capital Group. So, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we withhold everything except occupancy permits for those things that are already working through.
I think that the pressure from their tenants is just as important as any other form of pressure, and that we should not make an exception to prevent the tenants from putting their leverage on the developer.
Well, thank you, guys. Maybe, John, you can address briefly the issue of kind of the multiple stakeholders involved in the project and how this discussion might impact them.
Well, I, I totally understand, and, and I think we're all sympathetic. Well, I totally understand, and I think we're all sympathetic to the tenants are the ones that will suffer the consequences of the past due amount of money. That is going to be up to the board. You certainly have discretion to instruct the building commissioner to be more lenient in some cases and less than others. I think at the end of the day, and you kind of get the sense I'm ducking the question a little bit, Mr. Chairman, just just because it's complicated, at the end of the day, it's Capital Group that owes the money. If Capital Group still has the fee title for the full property, then the only way to move forward is to withhold the building permits and occupancy permits from everything, because it's Capital Group's property. If, and I do not know this, if Capital Group has transferred title to any portion of the property, then I think Mr. Coleman's comment is really important, and I think the board has to be very careful about it, because you don't want to withhold an occupancy permit from an entity that has no, no stake in this matter any longer. So I think we do need to confirm the ownership status, but if it is all still held by Capital Group, then I think the board has to treat all of the tenants in the property the same way, and that is to withhold building indoor occupancy permits.
Unfortunately, John, I agree with you on that.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Just, just a point, point of clarification. I think one of the board members is Victor Olson, STANTEC. I mentioned a number of 202. The, the final number that we went through is 218, 752 and 35 cents, to be exact.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, hearing no further comments, if the, if Capital Group's with us, turn it over to you, and just with the knowledge that, you know, we'd like to keep it rather high level and, you know, understanding what it is exactly that we are considering at this meeting.
May I proceed?
Floor is yours. Thank you.
Angelo Catanzaro, attorney for Capital Group and Mained Crossings LLC. The, I agree with a lot of what John said regarding Condition 30. But Condition 30 is a two-way road, gentlemen, ma'am, madam. It's also imposes some obligations on the part of the town. Now, the only thing that is, and I dispute totally that there has been a violation of the special permit. That's only a determination either this board can make or the building inspector can make. And we have provided the board with a lot of information as to why this number, this $218,000, is in dispute. Condition 30, as John also pointed out, requires my client to participate only in those expenses which are uniquely and specifically impacts from the project to the sewer system. The reason that we forwarded you those materials was to show you that even in their own documentation, it is conceded that a lot of the charges that we are disputing, okay, do not relate to unique and specific impacts from this project. Up until this point, Capital Group has proceeded and has paid every nickel, every dime that it was required to pay, whether under the MOA or under this decision. When you look at your decision, your decision did append to it a budget, a proposed budget. Since you entered, since you issued your decision, the town has issued over $1 million of change orders. That wasn't part of the decision. The decision referred to an exhibit that had a finite number. Based on that number, okay, the town applied for a grant. That grant embodied that number, something like $2.7 million, or whatever that number was. But since then, over $1 million in change orders were entered by the town, were issued by the town, okay, and the services were provided by the contractor. Those change orders, if you read them, suggest to us, okay, that they do not relate entirely to impacts that are specific and unique to this project. Moreover, your decision specifically says that before there are any changes, the town, the DPW, I guess, must consult with the applicant. That never occurred. When we first got the invoice back in January, okay, we sent, it took a couple of months. I think we got the invoice January 21st, but there was some communication, and then on April 30th, Capital Group sent the town a letter specifically addressing the concerns that we had with those allocations. By letter dated May 13th, STANTEC determined, responded, but didn't clarify how these costs, some of which were for water mains, some of which were for drainage, okay, most of which were north of 117, okay, how those costs directly and uniquely derived from our project. The way I look at it is, is if those, if those changes were needed in order for us to connect to the sewer system, there would be a direct impact. But if you look through your documentation and your materials, you will see that that's not the case. A lot of this extra work beyond the $2 million or whatever, the $3 million that this board approved in Exhibit C of its decision, we suggest was not related to this project. Now, that's a factual dispute. And to come out and say that we're in violation without this board having the opportunity to review all of the materials and make the determination as to whether or not those costs were what you contemplated above, a million dollars above what you approved, that we are in default or we are in breach of the special permit, I think requires the board to take a closer look at it. And, Mr. Chairman, I understand that, that you're not going to do that this evening. On June 17th, there was supposed to be a meeting between Capital Group and the town to discuss the very specific change orders that they contested on the day of the meeting, or the day before the meeting. It was canceled. And the next thing that happened was we got a demand letter from town council proclaiming we were in breach or in violation of the special permit and demanding a some certain. I think it's this board's function to review the information that we had to make your determination whether or not those costs, I mean, you can, your consultants are suggesting it, but they haven't been subjected to any questioning. They haven't met with my client to discuss why those are direct impacts, why they're unique and special to this project, why we should be paying for a driveway repair of someone who lives up on the other side of 117. What does drainage have to do with this project on a street that's a half a mile away? So there are a lot of facts that need to be reviewed. Now, I would prefer not to have you notice a public hearing because I think that these things can be resolved if the meeting that was supposed to take place took place, but it hasn't. If, like I said, since the meeting was canceled on June 17th, there's been no opportunity to meet with STANTEC, to meet with Wayne, to meet with the DPW, to have them explain to us how you can say that these particular costs were attributable to this project. We've asked for it about 15 times, and we're told over and over, go back to STANTEC's letter of May 13th. I would suggest to the board, if each of you read that, you would have no clue either. Okay, one of the other important things about the, your decision was that it was clearly intent, it was clearly meant for not to not to have Capital Group have to pay for pre-existing deficiencies in the sewer system. I mean, and, and a lot of these change orders directly reflected that. So, Mr. Chairman, without getting into a lot of detail, okay, I think it's premature to declare that we have, are in violation of the special permit. I mean, if the, if the way that you want to do it is to go immediately to a public hearing so that we can spend four hours at a public hearing presenting you our evidence, okay, and having a discussion, I think it'd be more prudent if this board recommended to the DPW, recommended, okay, to town engineer to sit down with Capital Group and do what they had said they were going to do back in June. Now, you know, the obligation of my client under this agreement is to pay for those direct impacts from the project. That is within dispute, what is in dispute. We did not appeal the special permit because we were comfortable that when you wrote Condition 30, you were going to enforce it against us and against, and have the town comply. So that is our suggestion.
Thank you, and I just wanted, if I can ask a follow-up question, you had highlighted, or it was, it was highlighted, I think, in a letter that we received this evening, earlier this evening. I guess, a contention that that you owe zero. And have you, have you, is that your stance, or have you made an assertion of a counter offer or your own opinion of what your portion is of the payment?
I think my client's position is that if you follow the analysis that they provided to the town together with the April 30th letter, that if we are correct on each of our assertions on the chain or change orders, we owe nothing. There, so that, that part is correct. That is an assertion. But then again, without an explanation of what those change, if those change orders are in compliance with the condition, okay, we don't know. Moreover, you will note in, STANTEC took the position that from the, that the project that was granted, they said that $534,000 of the work for which the grant was funded was exclusively town work. We have never been provided with a predicate as to how that number was reached. We would like to look at that. We think that it might be higher. So you say that we say we owe nothing is what essentially, Mr. Chairman, we are saying. However, there's the possibility that we may be owed money back. There's also the possibility that if thoroughly, if properly explained, that maybe some of those change orders were properly allocated to to Capital Group, and that money's owed.
Just one final question. Have you paid anything for sewer improvements at this point?
Everything except $218,000.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and, you know, if there are other questions, maybe first I'll just say that it's 7:07, and we did notice some public hearings for 7:00 PM. We're in the middle of wrapping up a matter, so folks that are joining us, we will be opening those hearings shortly. Thank you for your patience. Any board members that have any follow-up questions, now's your time, but, you know, knowing that we're trying to not get in too deep into the weeds, and I apologize for my follow-ups, which sort of pries open the can of worms, really, but any other follow-ups from the board at this time?
Hey, Greg, this is Chris.
Hi, Chris.
I, I feel that we have a lot of smart and dedicated people on this meeting right now, and I feel that we can continue to work together to really parse out this issue. And if it takes a little bit more time to do so, that's where I would like to spend our resources. I don't feel like at this point I have enough information to take an option that Counselor Whitman, or Whitton, called, I believe, the nuclear option. At this time, I don't feel that I have that information to, to go down that path. But I also want to see good faith actions on all sides to continue to work this problem. I want to see people work it out. So whatever, whatever we can do to give a little time to that, to make that happen, that's, that's my position on this.
Thank you, Chris.
Go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to say that I agree with Chris. I think this is a major issue that we have to try to, all of us, resolve. And perhaps if the interested parties can have that meeting between now and our next meeting and give us some more and more clear information, I think that's what we should do.
I'll just say really quickly, I know there's probably some members of, of our town administration that may feel frustrated for one reason or another. I'm, this is just me guessing. I don't have any inside information on this. I, I understand how opinions can be made over time. I just want everyone to continue to try to work the problem, regardless of what our previous stance is on, and I would request that from Capital Group as well, to drop whatever, whatever perspectives we had previously and just get back to the table and work the problem.
Greg, I make a motion that we have a public hearing for the revocation of the special permit on the evening of September 22nd, at a time of your choosing, for violation of the conditions of the agreement.
Second, and just a little bit of, I guess, deliberation. Bill, members are just confirming September 22nd is a meeting. I believe it is. I'm looking at the calendar. Regularly, it's the Fourth Tuesday in September. I think we'd be good to go on that day.
Bill, you're on mute, but it sounds like you're
Yes. Thank you. Now, to be clear, and I'd ask Attorney Whit, note, if, if a date is set by the board, would, how would that affect permits that are being issued in the meantime?
So the advertisement, Mr. Chairman, the advertisement of a public hearing for the end of September wouldn't affect any, anything, Bill, between now and then. The planning board could call off the public hearing at any time. It needs to be advertised 14 days prior to the hearing, so the board could always decide not to advertise if payment is made. So by scheduling a date certain, the board now puts in motion potentially a public hearing and gives the applicant between now and then to make payment. So, Bill, to answer your question directly, that advertisement for a public hearing is independent of anything the board might want to do at this meeting or a subsequent meeting regarding building permits or occupancy permits.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one question, because I wasn't clear on the motion? Is the hearing to determine if there is a violation? And then if it determines that there is, what the enforcement action will be? I mean, I didn't understand what Mr. Crenshaw was moving for.
Bill, can you restate?
The hearing is to revoke the permit based on a violation of Condition 30.
So the, then it's a presumption tonight that the, that the permit has been violated based on no public hearing?
Yeah, my reading of 30, you know, gives all the cost allocation to the Director of Public Works, sewer connection fees have been paid, but these payments have not been made. It's an obvious violation, so.
That's a conclusion that you're making. I think it's a conclusion that the board must initially make. Maybe some other members of the board don't agree with that conclusion based on the language of Condition 30. So I would ask that if there's going to be a hearing, that we have the opportunity to present evidence as to why we are not in violation. We are jumping like right into the frying pan before this board, and I think you've conceded, hasn't digested the, all of the information. I understand what the DPW Director said. I understand. I've read the letters. I've read the materials, and I would ask this board to do the same. Okay, before you make the conclusion that there's been a violation. I think that's getting two steps ahead of yourself.
Ken, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, Mr. Crenshaw's motion is perfectly acceptable because the purpose of the public hearing would be for the remaining board members. If Mr. Crenshaw has an opinion, he can share it with the other board members at the time. The other board members could disagree, and the other board members could vote not to revoke this. and the other board members could vote not to revoke the special permit. So my opinion is, Mr. Crenshaw's motion is perfectly acceptable. The public hearing will allow the applicant to speak, to argue, to debate. That's the purpose of the public hearing. At the end of the day, the board will either decide that evening or will continue the public hearing. So I think semantics aside, Mr. Crenshaw's motion is perfectly in order.
Thank you. Any other deliberations from the board in advance of a vote? All right, all in favor, I'll just go down the line, Andrew.
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
Apologies, Mr. Chairman. Can we just state the motion again? And can we just tone this motion in correctly? I just want to make sure we get it right.
Bill Memzer, do you have the, taking the notes on the motion? Or Bill Crenshaw, if you could just repeat one more time?
Motion is to have scheduled a public hearing for September twenty-second to determine if the applicant is in violation of condition thirty of the decision issued for the meter crossings project.
No, that's not quite the motion. The motion is to have a public hearing on the twenty-second concerning the revocation of the special permit for violation of condition thirty.
Even better.
Just to make sure, we'll go back down the line. Andrew, if you heard that right, I'm going to ask you to state your vote one more time.
Certainly. Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Jim?
No.
I'm an aye. That's three-two. Question to John or Bill. In this particular case, do we need super majority for votes? Or is simple majority satisfactory?
Simple majority is satisfactory to advertise for the public hearing.
All right. So we, so the motion passes, and we have a hearing set for September twenty-second. And we've got, you know, two months or so to sort this out. And, you know, my recollection, just given that this is now somewhat resolved for the night, my recollection going back to January is that I believe the board heard similar conversations at the time about deliberations, meetings, so forth and so on. And the board gave its clear opinion that we wanted to see this matter resolved six months ago. So we've got a hearing on the docket. Let's figure it out, maybe we won't come to that.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add one additional comment? The applicant, I'm not telling Angelo anything he doesn't already know, and I'm certainly not providing legal advice to the applicant, but I am to the board. The applicant can pay the money under protest. The applicant can pay the money and then sue the town later. And my suspicion is that's exactly what a court would say if this thing gets litigated, is pay it because it's in dispute and reserve your rights. So that is an option that is available solely to the applicant. Pay the money, pay it under protest, and resolve it later. But at least then, the town has the money that the town believes is due. And that is an option that, in my opinion, a court would advise the applicant to follow.
Thank you, John.
This is Victor Olson at Santech. Just one point of information is when the grant application was submitted by the town, they included part of the project that was going to have a shared cost to it, but also a portion of work that was all on the town that was negotiated that was a pre-existing condition. And both parts of that project were submitted for the grant application, and the project was funded that way. The grant suggested that there was eight hundred thousand dollars that would be shared equally between the town and the developer at four hundred thousand each. But recognizing that there was a portion of the work that was, you know, all on the town's cost, that number ended up being about two hundred and seventy-one thousand as budgeted. So right now, we're at two eighteen, which is less than what that amount would have been as budgeted with the grant. Just a point of information. And we can get into the details in future meetings if necessary.
Thank you, thank you, Victor, and I appreciate your input here tonight at this meeting. For the time being, everyone, I think we're going to put this item down.
I'm sorry, if I just, Megan's Muto, I just want to clarify the next steps, if that's okay, really quickly. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so for next steps, we have a public hearing scheduled. In the meantime, permits will be issued as normal. And, you know, we'll get the team together to review this and answer questions. One request I have is that if we could get a list of questions in writing so that we can be prepared for this meeting. You know, I've been hearing that the applicant's looking for more information, and I want to be helpful on our end here. So I think if we could get a list of questions so that we can all review it and then meet and have a productive, you know, working session with our consultants. You know, I hope we can resolve this issue.
Thank you, Megan. I think we should, yeah, there should be some communication the next day or two, few days to lay out that process and set up some meetings, et cetera. I'm sure you're already thinking all that, so thank you. So there was another matter related to the project that is important, and I apologize that we didn't speak to it in advance of this vote. It's related, I think, but not directly related. And that's the issue of some ongoing worksite violations and some lighting issues going on. So I think it is important to discuss while we have this group together. So Bill Memzer, if you wouldn't mind giving us an overview of some of the items that have come up that I think we'd like a chance to hear about and discuss with the developer.
There's two general items that should be discussed. The first is, the decision issued by the planning board lays out specific work hours and times, including what holidays must be observed. Specifically calls out federal holidays. We've had a number of instances where there has been work performed by a contractor on the site. The police chief has been very good at working with us. If it's determined that something is, there's work being done, an officer goes out, they write up a report, turn it into the town, and the building commissioner issues a fine. Today, I would, I think there's been about, I would say, five or six fines at least. But that is one issue. And I think the the question of what is a holiday and what is not a holiday, we've had that a number of times. I think federal holidays are called out, and that's what the decision calls for. The second issue is, I'm going to have to ask Wayne to help me on this one in a minute. But it's concerning lighting. And it's kind of a difficult one in where the security lighting is concerned. We've had some reports from the butters where there is a security lighting that is disruptive and they feel is beyond what should be, what it should be dimmed to. And then the second issue, I think, is direction of lighting, which the applicant has been working with, is trying to adjust the angles on the specific spotlights. What I'm going to ask Wayne to do, if, sorry, just throw this at you, Wayne, just a quick question. The photometrics that were done, I think what a lot of people would like to know is when the project is completed or when the lighting is completed, how will this be checked against the photometrics to make sure the lighting is constructed and working the way it was supposed to be according to the decision?
Sure, so I guess, thank you, Bill. I guess there's a couple of different ways. It is, you know, the project is partially constructed. It's probably very difficult to judge if a certain section of the site is in compliance. But if all of the lighting is installed eventually, there was a photometric plan prepared that shows illumination level at the property boundary. That could easily be measured if necessary. There's equipment out there that we could use to measure that if necessary. My recollection from the operation and maintenance plan is that when the lighting got up and running, and it didn't, I don't think, I could be wrong here, but I don't think the O and M plan talked about a certain percentage of light being operational, it referred to the entire site. So this is kind of a unique situation. But it did talk about the light being dimmed after certain hours. We have, our police chief has checked into that on a couple of different days. And the observation that the officers have made is that it doesn't appear that any dimming is happening. I don't know, Bill, this may be unfair, so I'll ask the Capital Group here. I don't know how much information relative to this has been passed on to the Capital Group and their site superintendent and what actions, if any, they have taken. But maybe that's a fair question at this point to ask.
Danny Ruiz, Capital Group Properties. So this is kind of the first time I'm hearing this about the lighting issue. But as of right now, the lighting portion is on. The dimming function of these light poles is not functioning yet. We're waiting for the module that's supposed to control all of the light heads in the entire development. And we should have that within the next couple of weeks. Once that's installed, at that point, we can control the dimming function. And Wayne is correct that it's supposed to dim to fifty percent of what the, of the lighting capacity. So as of right now, that might, that's the issue. We don't have the dimming function up and running right now.
So I guess I'll ask, understanding that the towns received several complaints from several butters on this, is there anything that can be done in the meantime? Danny, I understand it's an equipment issue, and that does happen. I mean, do these lights, I'll just ask point blank. Do these lights need to be on right now at night? Maybe they can just be shut off, and do you have the correct equipment?
I can meet with Tony, our site contractor, and see. I know he wanted it on, some of the lights on for security reasons. But we can meet on site and we can meet at night and go through which lights can be, can remain on. Try to lessen how much light people are seeing right now.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, the feedback we're getting is it's the lights abutting at least Field Street. And they're exceptionally bright after a certain hour. And I understand if the dimmer's not functioning, that that would happen. But, you know, maybe if, there's not really much going on over on Field Street other than the one-ten grill, which is not even open. So I don't know right now why these even need to be on. So maybe that's a consideration you guys could look at and get back to Mr. Memzer and maybe the building commissioner as to what your plan of action would be.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, Wayne.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Jim.
Yes, about four weeks ago, best of my recollection, the first complaint about lighting was sent to the planning board. I went up myself to the job site, talked to your superintendent up there, Tony, I believe. He told me that, yes, there was a problem with the dimmer. It was on order, but he would be shutting, dimming the lights or shutting them off at eleven-thirty at night. Obviously, that hasn't been fulfilled and followed up. I think you need to talk to Tony about that, Danny.
Yeah, we will. I will meet with him and discuss that.
Because, to my recollection, it was done for a couple of days because I went up and looked at it myself, and I thought it was a good solution to it. But evidently, nobody's followed up on it.
I'll follow up with that.
Could we, could we ask, in all due respect to the residents, could we ask that something happened by the end of the week and report back to Bill and the building commissioner as to what the plan of action is? That gives you three days to try to figure something out.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Can I also talk to the hours of operation? I know there was an issue, there was a fine that was for Market Basket. Tony has been on, I know it was for early, working earlier than seven o'clock. Tony is out there every morning making sure the people are not starting their machines before seven. They're doing, he's doing everything he can.
Mr. Chair, can we stick to the lighting issue first and then get to the work violations?
Did you have, Bill, did you have something else to follow up on the lighting, or you want to?
I need clarification because I've seen communication that says some of the lighting is going outside of the site, which is flat out not allowed by zoning and a total violation, doesn't matter when the hell you dim it. So if some of that site is going up, some of that light is going off-site, then they need to turn it off until they can.
Wayne, how do we determine if that's the case?
I mean, somebody's going to have to observe it, honestly. I mean, the only one that we've been able to do this is really a police officer at this point. We could certainly, Bill, maybe you could talk to Chief Noble again and see if they can get more clarification as to how much spillover I did. I agree with Mr. Crenshaw that that did seem to be the report, that there was a lot of spillover that shouldn't really happen according to the photometrics plan.
Yeah, and I think, I can ask Danny. A lot of this was the, we had a couple of months ago where there was a spotlight for the flagpole, right? That was bleeding over, and instead of going up, it was facing the residents. Isn't that what the origin of this bleed over was, or is there another issue?
So I believe there was an issue with the spotlight for the flagpole, but the flagpole lighting was shut off.
Let me comment on that flagpole lighting. If you go back into your design specifications, you specifically calls for uplighting on that pole. That means you got a light at the bottom of the pole. That has not been done, as far as I know.
So I I agree with Bill that if lighting, Bill Crenshaw, that if any lighting is in excess of the design, you know, committed to light levels and it can't be controlled, regardless of what's on order or whatever, it can't be on. It's got to be shut off. If you need security lighting, you got to get ground level temporary lighting or whatever, something else. It's got to be controlled, and, you know, we can't be waiting around for equipment to arrive from wherever.
Mr. Chair, that was, goes back to my original point about the photometric plan. The photometric plan clearly didn't show anything going off of the property to a level where it was in violation of our bylaws. So I guess that was my, one of my questions to Wayne is like, how would we determine, you know, when it's consistent with the photometric plan?
You'd have to take some type of a light meter, Bill, and measure. You know, I mean, from memory, you know, normally, like, no more than a half a foot candle is supposed to go over the property line. That's a pretty small amount. So if we're getting reports that there's a lot of spillover, I haven't physically, only being, this is being told to me. But, I mean, I disagree with other members and the chair that maybe we should just shut these off till we can figure this out.
So I'll talk to Tony and have them shut off until we can get this figured out. I have not witnessed the light spilling over into, you know, off the property line. So what I'll have to do is I'll go out there and I'll look at the lighting at night and see when it's on so that I can see for myself and know exactly what's going on. But I'll meet with Tony tomorrow and have him turn off all the lights at night.
Greg, could I make an observation?
Yes, please.
There's been reference to fifty percent reduction in light at eleven-thirty PM. And there's been some general reference to security lighting. I wanted to make the observation that that is actually a different stage of reduced lighting. The operations manual clearly calls for fifty percent reduction at eleven-thirty PM and security lighting only at one AM. So there's actually two step downs that are called for in the operations manual. I don't know whose job it is to determine what level of lighting is security, but clearly the way it's I don't know whose job it is to determine what level of lighting is security, but clearly, the way it's written, it's some amount that's less than 50%.
You are correct on that, but the dimming function is why we can't do that. So I agree with Wayne, we will shut those off. Security lighting is a different stage. I understand what you're saying in the O and M, and I agree with you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that observation because that wasn't being clear. I understand that there's a technological problem that's preventing that from happening now. But just wanted to be clear that there are two steps of reducing the lighting.
And I think a follow-up, I think if I remember right, the O and M manual gives the police chief some power to help determine what that level of security lighting should be. And obviously, it's going to be difficult for him or her to do that until more lights are installed, or at least the majority of the lights are installed on the site.
Yep.
Any other comments related to lighting from anyone in public or any one on the board or developer? Okay, thank you. So then the matter of the work hours and days of operations of construction, if you care to respond.
Yeah, so the hours of operation, the, there was a violation, but it was done by Market Basket. We have talked, spoken with the contractor from Market Basket and reiterated that they cannot start anything before seven o'clock in the morning. So the violations have not been with us or with our contractor. It has been with, it was with Market Basket.
I believe there was another issue of working on the July 3rd federal holiday. Is that also the case?
So Bill Nemzer had sent out an email to us on, about no work on July 3rd. Tony sent out a follow-up email to everybody on the site, saying no work because it was a federal holiday. That's when the Independence Day was being observed. So they, we did send that out. None of our contractors were working. But, so I'm not sure as to who, what other violation there was on that day. I have not received any of the reports or any of that. Bill, you care to fill us in?
Yeah, on the 3rd, I honestly can't recall. I have it right here. I'll have to look it up, what, who it was. I believe it was the interior 110 grill, and there was a contractor working. There's a police report that, I can pull up in a moment, but in general, that, there was a violation on the 3rd.
Bill, wasn't that about frightening the parking lot?
No, let me see.
On the 3rd?
I believe that was on the 5th.
Yeah, this is Megan's, it was, it was to Market Basket construction. And a fine was issued and the police report was delivered last week to, to Market Basket.
Okay, well, you know, I appreciate there's a lot of activity, but, you know, it's got to get coordinated somehow. I'm personally tired of hearing this stuff in these meetings, so I appreciate if everyone, you know, do what you got to do. We can't have these things anymore, including with the lighting. I don't know if there's anyone else on the board that care to comment?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we're just hearing the same story over and over and over again. I'm super tired of excuses from them.
Yeah, it's like deja vu. It's all the exact same thing.
Personally, I would pull the permit just for that, but maybe is there a way to make Capital Group personnel be onsite at the beginning and end of every workday and also on holidays to make sure this doesn't happen? Because I couldn't care less that, you know, they tell people not to do it. It's their site. They're responsible. I don't care if it's Market Basket or Dunkin' or Grill 110. We did not give the permit to the electrician for Dunkin' Donuts. We gave it to Capital Group. And unless they can figure out a way to stop this, I'd say we pull the permit for this.
Can I make a?
Oh, maybe if I can just reach out. Oh, yes, please, now, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say something similar that I remember in multiple previous instances of the planning board talking about mostly work time violations. What was discussed was how to remedy this since the fines didn't seem to be working. And one of the steps was taking more drastic actions in relation to other things, if they came in for major, minor modifications or any other issues. Remembering about what kind of neighbors they are and taking that into consideration when dealing with larger issues. So I am not voting, I'm just remembering that from.
Thank you. I, I think it's, we have John with us. John, we've run into this issue where, you know, there's a, I believe, a state mandated fine maximum of $300. Hasn't seemed to be enough of a disincentive to prevent these types of miscommunications. In your experience and your knowledge of our, you know, what kind of tools we have in our toolbox, what might you recommend here for us to, you know, further our interest in seeing that these guidelines are followed?
What I'd say, Mr. Chairman, is the board has the same range of options as we discussed earlier. Anything from the revocation to imposition of withholding building permits or occupancy permits. It's typical that the, that the imposition of a fine for a large project is not a deterrent. The applicant often finds it's easier just to pay the fine and kind of dare you to catch them. I think in this case, you know, and I'll speak to the earlier comment. I think in this case, the applicant knows that it needs the planning board support. It knows that it needs town meeting support, and this is no way to get that. So I, I think frankly, with regard to the permit violations, not operating in accordance to, with the permit and/or the lighting violations, I think the board is best served by advising the applicant and the applicant by advising the board that it will simply comply. I mean, these, these infractions don't have to happen. There's no gray matter here. It's a violation or it's not. And the applicant has total control over that. So I, I think it's, it's a good shot across the bow. I think the applicant has heard the board loud and clear. You have an advertised public hearing now for revocation of the permit. I certainly would assume that the applicant is going to comply, especially because it's easily complied with after all this time. These things shouldn't be happening. So I'd say, Mr. Chairman, your, your options are as, as you've been, the town has been pursuing, continually issue fines and just chalk this up for that planning board public hearing in September. And, you know, town meeting has a long memory. That's, that's my experience as well. Two-thirds vote of a town meeting is not an easy thing to get, especially when 1,400 people almost unanimously supported this project. I think that's an important reminder to the applicant.
Thank you, John. Any further comments on this matter at this time?
Just a quick comment. I echo what, what Counselor just said. That the, the collective violations in general undermine my faith or I trust that all parties are acting in good faith in accordance with the agreement. And it doesn't, these things are collective. They don't paint a great picture. And I'm going to go back to my comment previously earlier tonight, that I continue to expect good faith actions. And weeks and months of miscommunication and non-compliance does not engender trust for me.
You know, and just to underline that a little bit more, right, like, I still hear from people who recall issues during the many years of hearings and town meetings and some of the tactics that were undertaken by the developer at that time, that they, you know, to be fair, have done a lot of good work since then, but, you know, people still remember that. And, and, you know, I think we need to underline this because I think that there will be impacts. People do remember this, and there is a track record.
All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate the comments on this matter. It is now quarter of eight. I'd like to move on to the next part of the meeting. Thank you to Capital Group for participating, and we, I'm sure, will be speaking with you all soon. I'd like to propose a two-minute recess. Say five.
Before you do that, can you confirm that the public hearing for Coolidge School will not happen tonight?
Thank you, yes. For item seven on our agenda, the Coolidge School, is, my understanding is it will be continued. We haven't continued it yet, but the applicant has asked for that, so that'll be put off several weeks. So if you're on the call for the, for that, well, maybe let's just do it right now. Bill, Bill, what is your, what, what was the date that we decided to continue that to?
July 28th, next, our next meeting.
Okay, so I'd, I'd like to, do I need to open it before I continue it? I just continue it?
Use motion, yeah, motion and a vote with it.
So I'd like to move that we continue the public hearing for the Coolidge School.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, may I add one thing? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you use your motion? This has nothing to do with Coolidge School. They, they were totally compliant with all our regulations. It is strictly because of the agenda tonight. And they, he thought that it would make, make more sense. And then the zoning board is going to have to reschedule as well. So this is by, by staff's request.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor by voice. Aye.
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 I have a question first. So does that mean there's no more material that's going to be submitted for the hearing? Because they'll have to do that within seven days, because we don't do virtual hearings unless they do.
I, I'm sorry, Bill, you, you do, do you expect new material within the next seven days?
Correct.
I don't. I think we have pretty much everything.
Okay, everything's all set. They're not going to change anything. All right, that's fine.
No, I haven't heard anything. The big, the big, the one thing, zoning board and the planning board. We need the zoning board to follow the planning board, and that was just very difficult to do that with, if we bumped them off.
Then Craig, I mean, yes.
Okay, thank you. The hearing has been continued to the 28th. Thanks. We'll take a five-minute recess and resume with a public hearing for 115 Main. Thank you. Me, Andrew. Ken. Hello, Katie.
No Angry Bird, Katie.
I can, I can put it back if you want.
You having fun, Natalie?
Oh, yeah.
This is your first meeting, right?
It is. I know, I feel very formal suddenly.
Do we have Chris? Are you back with us?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. Bill Nemzer. Bill Nemzer, are you there? lurking in the back of your basement?
Bill, are you on mute? You're on mute, Bill, in case you're trying to talk.
Try to get Bill back to the meeting here before we get going. Bill Nemzer. Well, it's been five minutes. We can get going. So we'll resume the public hearing for 115 Main Street, continued from May 26th this year. Welcome back, everyone. I believe the applicant is with us. I was gonna ask Bill Nemzer, there you are, Bill. Mind giving us an update as to how things left off or any developments since the May 26th hearing?
Well, there's a couple of things. The, where we left off, there were some materials that. We were going to be updating stuff which I haven't received yet, but I'm sure the applicant will give us a update on the timeframe for that and the status of them. What we tried to do to try to, what staff tried to do was, we developed some. Draft conditions of approval. And we, I think we actually circulated to all of the board as well as you know. And forwarded them to the McDonald's with the hope that they could start a foundation and kind of. Show where some progress could be made and they responded to this and I circulated it to you all yesterday. I believe you have it. There are still several outstanding issues. And, but we made a lot of progress, I think. The last meeting, you know, we. It was, it ended a little funny, but I think there was some progress made and I think that we're moving forward, but I'd really like to hear on the. From the applicant on some of the updates in the materials and what they anticipate. They'll be presenting.
Oh, hi. Candace from McDonald Development. I'm here with Jimmy and Jackie. Hello, everyone. I'm just, to clarify, Bill, you're referring to the conditions of approval. Those are materials that you're talking about, correct?
Those were the materials that I had received that are. I believe there was an issue with, we're still. Some elevations that were going to be rectified, so there's a matching set. That we were expecting and. So if we look at the notes here. Yeah, are there?
I think what I'm being updated with is any of the pending materials are going to be in the conditions of approval pending the outcome of this meeting.
Well, yeah, that's for the board to have to make that determination.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jim.
Yes. In order to get this thing rolling along and get it. So that we can hopefully get to a conclusion, I would like to move that we approve the request. For special permit and site plan approval for a mixed-use project to be located at 115 Main Street. With conditions and redline responses and variances submitted by the applicant on July 13th to the board. This will allow us to get it onto the discussion track to get a conclusion.
Can somebody tell me what happens if A, that passes, or B, it does not pass? Let's start with B.
If it did not pass, this required, requires a supermajority to pass, so it'd be four of the five. Let me see, can everybody vote on this one? Let me think. Yeah. So it requires a supermajority. If. If there was a denial issued, the board would have the option. To make it with or without prejudice and the difference is that if it's a denial with prejudice, then. The project can't be, the exact same project cannot be submitted for a period of two years. If it's without prejudice, applicant can come back anytime. And the first was if Bill asked if, if it was approved. If it was approved, there are, there's quite a. Number of conditions of approval that would have to be met in order to actually bring the project. To construction. I think that. The board probably is going to have some additional, would have more additional. Conditions than what we sent out in the draft. But. I mean, it's. The engineering conditions, if you all remember, there were three different sets of conditions that were extensive and required some work and understandably, they. They were broke, broken down into civil, into the riverfront and what was the third? Was it traffic lane, I think? And.
Structural, Bill.
Structural, right, okay, and. So that's the. That's, you know, if the board chooses to approve it, that's what would be there. The outstanding items, we still have, there's a requirement for a development agreement, which. I'm confident we could get that. That done. There is.
Can I ask you another clarification? I mean, do we not have to make findings regarding a couple sets of special permit criteria before we can vote? To approve or not approve?
Yes, so in, when the special permit is approved and because this is in the downtown over the district, there's going to be two sets of special. Permit criteria and we would go through them and we'd find that they either, you don't have to find that they. Exist necessarily, that you have to consider each of them.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, does that not have to happen before a vote on the approval of the project?
Right, you're saying it's procedurally out of order.
Yeah, I mean, if we approve the project, then we can't go back and say, oh, by the way, it was, did not meet the special permit criteria.
No, to approve a special permit, we have to go through the special permit criteria and that includes the downtown over a district criteria.
So I'm suggesting that motion is problematic. Due to logistics.
It would be before a vote was taken, we'd have to do the findings.
Mr. Chairman, did that get seconded?
I've not heard a second yet, Jim.
Jim, could you explain your thinking behind why we can't have discussion, why this would open up more discussion?
Well, I think we've got, we've got a whole lot of, a lot of material that was sent into us relating to the conditions that. Bill sent to the applicants and I think we're at a point now where we could discuss each one of them. Right on down the line and make decisions on whether we like it or we don't like it, strike it, add to it. But I think at this stage of the game, we've got to start getting to the end of this thing, so. I think there's a lot of material that got sent. I read it all. It seemed to be indicative to what was asked of them. And I'm merely asking that we can get a good, proper discussion going and with a finite result at the end, Andrew, that's all.
I understand that. I just don't understand why the vote first.
Well, I'm not asking for a vote. I'm asking for, I made a motion. There's, can be unlimited discussion about a motion. Think of the same thing if it happened at the, at the town meeting. You have a motion by the selectman, it's seconded, and then there's discussion before a vote.
The point I'm making is, as a planning board, we don't have flexibility sometimes of town meeting procedures. We have to act on the special permit criteria before we.
Well, Bill, if.
Before we vote on the special permit itself.
Bill, at this stage of the game, I merely ask for a second so we can discuss it. You can do anything you want to it after that. But I think we owe the applicant and we owe the town a finite resolution to this at some point in time. And that's the reason for my motion.
Well, if, Mr. Chair and Board, I mean, I would be happy to. Present the special permit criteria, just run through them and the board could discuss them in order, if it's their pleasure. Whatever, whatever the board would like, I could do that and item by item.
I mean, I'm, as we sit here, I'm going back to the minutes from the 26th. And just in a kind of quick review of some of the discussion that we had. I see a number of items that I think we very clearly, some of us, myself, a few others. Identified as being required revisions. Drawings. I, that we're not seeing, we're not seeing that. So, I don't know, I stand by what I said at the last meeting and. You know, if folks want a second and deliberate, that's fine, but I mean, I'm, that's where I stand. I mean, I think. I made myself clear as to what. I wanted to see, to feel comfortable moving forward with the project and so with that on the table, you know. The motion is out there to be seconded.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I say something?
Yes.
Um, a lot of the other discussions about other projects, the phrase "in good faith" has come up a lot. And I think at this point in our journey. Trying to get this project approved as a family and as business, we're really looking for some kind of light at the end of the tunnel. So before you guys decide on whether or not you're willing to discuss any further. I just want to summarize what it is that we're doing here, if that's okay with you guys.
If you can be brief. I mean, I feel like I've heard this a couple of times, so please be brief.
We want to build a meaningful building that falls under, you know, a mixed-use project that has a commercial space, 26 units, 32 parking spots. And a promenade that the town can share as a community. So the whys behind why we want to do this and why the town wants to do this, they align. We want to improve affordable housing in the town. We want to have, you know, everybody. Community-wise, have a riverfront access to, you know, the rail trail and the riverfront and we want to be able to help. Redevelop the town in an important location, so. At this point, it would be. A positive turn of events if, if you as a group can decide on whether or not there is going to be a light at the end of this tunnel. For us as a business and the town and the specifics can get worked out through the, you know. Yeah, conditions of approval. I mean, that's all we're asking for.
I'm not comfortable with that. I'm sorry. I feel like we've, we've gone over this before. There are certain things that need to be drawn. I mean, to respond to your, to your comments, you know, I personally feel like in talking to town staff. We've shown you the roadmap for a year and a half and it has not materialized. So, you know, I'm confused. I don't understand. How we've, you know, we or town staff have been unclear or unfair about this. We're not, I'm not seeing a response, so it, you know, it's, it's pretty clear to me.
Pivoting to generalities doesn't necessarily help us address the concrete issues at hand.
Right. A conceptual alignment is great. That's the basis of a project. A huge, the majority really of what we have to do here is evaluate the details of how this actually comes to realization. And, you know, I thought several times over the past however many months that we've had, you know. Good, clear communication on what those details need to be for, at least for myself and a few others to. Feel comfortable moving this thing forward and it's, you know. Sorting it out in construction in conditions is just not the way I want to do business here. I mean, that's just, that's really subverts. The whole point. I mean, we could have agreed two years ago that we had a concept and, you know, we'll sort out the details later. No, we, we've gone through. An exhaustive, exhausting drawing process and it, it doesn't seem to bear fruit on my end. It's unresolved, you know, so.
I just don't get it. There's a disconnect here.
If I may, if I may, and, and I, I understand. The applicant wants to respond and I appreciate that and I, I want you to have time to do that, but. Is there a way, because I know this process continues to other entities inside of the town of Maynard. And other entities outside of Maynard as well regarding the riverfrontage and things of that nature. Is there a way to provide approval, approval of this process? With some of the other items still pending and then can come back to the board so that the applicant can continue on the process. In parallel, in a different order, so that they can navigate those other challenges with other entities. I don't know if that's the case and this is probably goes to Bill Nemzer to get his creativity on it. But is there a way to bridge this so that the applicant can continue down this path? With, with some of the conflicts that may still exist? I just want to find a way, I do want to find a way to yes, because I know this is not the end of the road for them.
Chris, I, let me just respond to what you're saying and I, you know, second the goodwill and like the willingness to find a way forward and to work through things, but. You know, I think we can't look past, you know, last meeting. You know, what happened in terms of this obstructionist almost approach with someone who, you know, came in and didn't provide any information and stridently demanded us to act. Followed by, you know, months of not submitting things that were requested. You know. There's a limit to, you know, we can't keep saying, yes, we'll work with you, we'll, you know, make new arrangements, new accommodations, when it gets ignored. Right? You know, and we think back to other, you know, similar, you know, other issues with the same applicant and other projects where. Drawings even when submitted turn out to be built differently. You know, I think we, we've extended a lot of time and a lot of effort and, you know, given a lot of guidance, much of which is. Not taken and it doesn't seem to move us forward. So I think we need to be cognizant of this.
I. I'll add to that.
I agree with all of that, Andrew. And I guess my perspective is slightly different in a way that I think continuing to act in good faith and Greg, I know you want to get this on with, so I'll make this very brief. Continuing to act in good faith is still in the best interest of the town and any way that I can work to help get to yes, I think is in the best interest of the town. I don't disagree with anything with what you said.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I'm willing to work in good faith. I just, you know, I'm waiting for the thing we asked for two months ago.
So, so.
I agree.
And Chris, to respond, I mean, I personally feel that when there are matters that involve other boards, conservation. Structural design, the wall, you know, those are complicated things that require, you know, state input, yada, yada. I think. I personally have been very open to looking at ways to condition those things, to allow that design process to go forth. However, architectural elevational design, materials, details of a landscape plan, I mean, the end. Deliberation of those proposals are with this board. So why are we putting it off? Make a proposal, defend it, let's discuss it, you know, I, it just hasn't been, you know, we, we were given a roadmap. We agreed on a roadmap together, I thought, and then the roadmap was basically yanked out from under us. And that's how I felt.
And I, I agree with that as well.
Why?
I, I, I'm, I'm hoping there's a way that we can, perhaps we can condition. Approval of the site plan later on. After this, this project goes through another path and has to come back to us then for final site plan review, perhaps. I don't know. I don't have enough experience to get creative in that sense. I just want to really keep trying to find a way to yes, because I. I feel like the applicant. Is, is not going to further respond. I take that seriously and I don't want the project to fail.
Well, I'd just like to say that it'd be irresponsible for us to act. Too quickly because it is our primary responsibility to protect the town. And you, I mean, we had 60 minutes of painful schooling in the discussion with Capital Group earlier tonight. On what happens when you don't work out the details. And, you know, I don't want to be arguing about. And, you know, I don't want to be arguing about the definition of maintenance versus rehab or, you know, whether it's going to happen this time or that time, or when the trees are going to be replaced. I want to figure out stuff ahead of time and everybody understands upfront. We don't keep revisiting the issue months and years later.
Also valid points. So, back, Greg, that's all I have.
I mean, you know, Chris, I appreciate the sentiment, you know, but I, I, I will argue that everyone on the board and town staff have been trying to find a way to yes for two years. So, I, so I, and, and whether or not we continue to work to do that, you know, we can debate that. But, you know, I, I feel like we've all been creative, flexible, very clear. You know, and, and my, you know, superficial understanding of what town staff have gone through, I don't even think we know half of the amount of creativity, flexibility, and patience that have been exercised by those folks. All in the interest of getting to yes. I'm absolutely confident of that. So, you know, I'm drawing a line. I draw, drew a line last time saying, you know, "I got to see this, X, Y, Z. It's in the minutes." So where, I mean, where does that leave me?
Mr. Chair, may I comment?
Yes, please.
This is kind of responding to Chris's earlier question to me. As you saw from the conditions of approval that were drafted, there's, there's a lot there that is conditioned. Things like the, but the landscape plan and elevations to the board satisfaction are clearly part of the, the necessary materials, in my opinion. I do think that there was a lot that we have shown that can be conditioned, but I think like the stuff that Greg mentioned and everything was, was, should be presented in order to, you know, make a determination. Well, let me ask the applicant. Is there, the, the elevations, there was some adjustments that had to be made. Are they being made? Candace?
Sure. Hi. The elevations, you guys can clearly see the building. You can clearly see the size of the building. You can clearly see everything here. If you don't want to vote, don't vote. But you've had enough information here. We spent close to $400,000. And you talk about, "Oh, we did this. We did that. We did that." What about us? We're in here in town. We want to improve. Do we have another developer doing anything in town, downtown? It's half vacant. It's half vacant. Bank of America, every place you look, and you have a junky old building here that you want to, like Jackie said, you can't see the forest for the trees. You see the building. You see what it's going to look like. It's not going to change. Make sure that the building inspector goes by that and it's not going to change. We gave you a set of plans for the landscape. We're about two places in Maynard that has landscaping. McDonald's and McDonald's hamburgers and McDonald's that own the property. We do landscaping. Who else does it? No one. Who else does anything downtown on Coolville? Vote it down. Vote it down. Go ahead. Vote it down.
I'm sorry. We don't need to be.
Your job. Vote it down.
Mr. McDonald on mute. I don't need to be yelled at. You're on mute. You cannot hear us, or we cannot hear you. Excuse me. Guys, I will, I won't take that. I'm sorry. I don't think any of us need it after a long day. We all have better things to do than to be yelled at. We have a process. We have bylaws that we're following. We're doing our job. Okay? So, you know, if anyone wants that offline, you feel free to contact Mr. McDonald for an earful. I'm trying to do my best here. I think everyone else on the board is, as is town staff. We have rules we have to follow and we're following them. Okay? The reality is that good intentions are not good enough in this process, in my opinion. Okay? We need details, and we've asked for details very clearly. And I'm not seeing it. So, I don't really think I have much more to say at this point. You know, I think we need to decide as a board how we want to move forward. You know, we have a public hearing that's open. You know, redevelopment of this project, of this property through McDonald or other, comes through this board. If we voted down and a new project, you know, emerges, it comes through this board. It's the same process every single time. This is how we do business. It's in the bylaws. So, you know, I'm sorry. You can expect the same thing next time you or any other developer coming forward with this project. We have, you know, in my opinion, the expectations that we've set out are below standard for what I want to see for applications in this town. And we've outlined many ways that that low bar can be met. Flexibility, patience, over and over. And I don't think I have a choice. When, when no new material comes in, the statement is, "That's it. That's what you get." And I've made it very clear on my end what my very basic requirements are, and they're not there. So, I don't know what else to say.
Candace, is it, is it the position that there's not going to be any more submissions to address what the board had asked for in the last meeting? Is that?
No. Everything that we've submitted as far as getting to this point is what we have. And whatever happens after this will dictate what else gets submitted.
So, I, I have to say, I feel like that's extremely unfortunate. And, you know, I, I want to talk to the board about what we do with our public hearing, which is currently open. And, you know, in my opinion, a closure of the public hearing is a nail in the coffin for the project. It should be taken very seriously.
Chair, would it, do you think it would help to review what, I mean, I know it's in the minutes, but we could review what the board is expecting as a minimum to come in? And I mean,
I would strongly like to do that.
I don't think it's important. I think the applicant has made themselves very clear. They're not submitting any new information. So, I think I'm going to, you know, I don't know, I'll, I'll turn to the, to everyone else on the board, but, you know, that seems clear and I'm glad that's been, you know, stated again for the record.
Greg, may I speak?
Yes, please, Jim.
Let me withdraw my motion to approve and make a motion to disapprove without prejudice. If the applicant isn't going to send anything more in, why are we going to continue this?
Do, we have elevations that were going to be matched, that we're not matching, as I recall correctly. We had changes that you wanted to the landscape plan, but it didn't seem like that extensive of a list. And I, I, scratching my head.
May I, may I please, just Greg, for a minute? I have immense faith that we can do this, guys. And I, I want to give this one more try. I want to provide a minimum list of items that the board is expecting to see for submittals that will get us close or get us to a point where we can take a vote.
Haven't we done that, Chris?
I, I understand that.
So, can't that be, is that, isn't, isn't reiteration of that list something that began with staff time offline?
Perhaps. I, what I'm saying is, we're close. We can all do this. And I want to make clear what, what the board is expecting. And I want to give the applicant one last time to provide the submittals and to get us to a point where we can take a vote.
Chris, the applicant just said he's not. Based on last time and on what we've just heard, it sounds like there's nothing more.
I agree, Andrew. So, let's go ahead and deny it.
I, I guess I'm urging the applicant to, I'm urging the applicant to give this one last shot, because I think we can do it. You all know this is important. We all want to get there. I really urge the applicant to give this one last shot.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I do think that if the applicant agreed and we reviewed the materials that are outstanding, we had a little, a timeframe and the applicant agreed that we're going to go a little longer. I'm confident we could do it, but I, it definitely requires the good faith on both parts. And I can assure you that anything that the board wants, the staff will work to try to do it as best we can, make sure that any outstanding items are addressed. I, I simply, you know, have and confident we could do it, but it, it's going to require, it's going to require cooperation from the applicant.
May we hear from the applicant, please?
We'd like to hear the list of outstanding items.
I'd suggest that the staff arrange time to meet with the applicant to provide the details from the last meeting and prior discussions. And that that form the basis for going forward. I'm more than happy to continue to review any materials that are produced.
I agree. I don't want to go through that right now. I think it's pretty clearly stated in the record.
Frankly, it's not, because I can add another half dozen that we never had time to talk about before. The biggest is, it's kind of important to see the development agreement before you vote on a special permit that requires a development agreement. The other thing, you know, there's lots of issues I could go through, but not even close.
Trying to insinuate that the, this list was comprehensive, merely that this was the last thing that was discussed.
Well, I, I think, Bill, Bill is correct that the development has, agreement has to be done, but the effective date, you know, of a, of a decision could be based on successful execution. I mean, that's, that's that's, that's doable.
Yeah, but I, I don't even see how that makes a difference, because it's going to take just as long to put a conditioned development agreement together than to get it done in the hearing process where it should be done where the public can participate. And, you know, there's an easy half dozen other issues like that. And once again, I just go back to, we have to protect the interests of the town. That's the point of zoning bylaws. And that is our responsibility. And everything is just kind of wishy-washy here, and we can't protect the interests of the town if we just say, "We'll figure it out later."
I don't disagree with that. I, I was strictly commenting here on the, the development agreement. That's, that's a different, and a different issue, and it could be conditioned though on that. And that's something that more or less, we have a model from, we know in which general direction it's going to go. If it doesn't go, everything's null and void. But,
Can I just jump in for one sec, though? I'm terribly sorry. And, and Bill Crenshaw not, you know, dismissing in any way like the validity of your concerns. I'm merely saying that, you know, the good faith sign, I think, would be if we could get, move forward on these set of things we talked about last time around, then that would form at least the basis for forging a new path forward. And that spending a lot of time trying to figure out, you know, everything that we might need to discuss now would take a lot of time. And without, you know, in the absence of seeing, you know, sort of movement on these small number of things, I don't think we should spend that time.
I don't know. I mean, this is our second meeting talking about nothing on this hearing.
Yeah. I really feel strongly that I think the accounting for the, you know, items that we need to see responses to, it's not really our responsibility to take, to keep track of that stuff. We have a public record. You know, the applicant should be proactive in addressing our concerns. And I, what I'm seeing is show up at a meeting with nothing and then wait a month and then come back and say, "We need you to vote, but we're not going to give you anything more," and just take it or leave it. So, you know, I'm sort of at my end on this. And unless, unless someone can convince me that continuing another month and doing the exact same thing again, you know, is not what's going to happen. We're actually going to be able to reboot something.
Well, Mr. Chair, if, I'm sorry. I think the majority of the items are designed that would be outstanding. And if there was a clear expectation set by the board for what they expect to see on, on the design items, that was, I mean, I realize it's in our, our, our rules and regulations and design bylaws and whatnot, but I, I think that a lot of this does come down to design and there's an impasse that, that, that has to be, has to be broken for the project to go forward. And I mean, we have the, the comments of, the outstanding comments. I think we could, if we want to drill down a little more and, and refine the list, I'm sure that could be done for what's outstanding. And I think that, you know, it's still doable, but it definitely, it, it, I can understand totally how the board doesn't want to kick the can down the road and have nothing in another month. I, I totally, believe me, I appreciate it.
To my mind, it's, you know, the good faith move is to do so. And if we learn something different in one month, then we do.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I think the applicant does have some more questions. I, pretty sure he does. So,
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm beginning to, not beginning, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering why we're discussing. So, if, if, you know, if folks feel there's a path forward, then I'll happily listen. But I'm, I think I've said my piece. There are other questions? Please go ahead.
I think we should, you know, turf this, continue, turf it back to staff, allow them to elucidate or restate the issues from the record. Reconvene if there's new materials and we think that that is the proof that there's a new path forward. And if there's not, there's not.
The applicant would like to know if the, if the engineering and landscape items, environmental, okay, anyway, if some of the items from engineering and environmental can be conditioned, why can't design items be conditioned?
Just look at '42 summer. I mean, we, we had a pretty nightmarish, you know, couple of hearings trying to sort out just simply, you know, satisfying elements of the project that were sorted out during that condition phase. I mean, it was a real pain. It's not how we should be doing business. We should sort out the details. We have the ability to draw. We look at the drawings and they tell you, they tell us what you're going to do and then you do it. I mean, you build it that way. That, that's.
And I don't think that's specific just to our project. I think during the meeting, the minor and major modification meeting, it was actually said that it is sometimes a procedure of some contractors that at the end of the building being built, they take all the modifications to a time at once. But because we have the design reviewer across the street looking out his window, watching us, it seems we have a microscope over us. And it's not necessarily the same situation for other contractors in town. So, that's kind of a special circumstance. I see the frustration that you guys went through and we went through the same frustrations trying to get that minor and major modification thing settled, but we're all doing the best we can. A lot of these rules that are coming up are sometimes being developed as we are. as we are building specifically McDonald Development. So it's not really fair to say that.
But wait, if, if you don't build something that's on a drawing, that's not anyone else's issue.
And that is true of probably every contractor ever. So,
I've worked on a lot of projects and that hasn't been true, but.
You've never altered anything.
Guys, this is not helpful to the current con-
No, this is the point. I mean, I'm trying to be positive and say, here's a path forward. But now becoming frustrated, apology.
I think, you know, to me, design is squarely in our scope. A hundred percent. There's no other board that is responsible for design review of your project. There are other boards that, you know, have overlap conservation with stormwater, et cetera, within, you know, that's, that's an overlapping jurisdiction where we have to provide some leniency for the process. Design is ours. It's our scope to review. And, you know, in honesty, I don't think it's unreasonable. In fact, it's quite clear in our regulations that we ask for drawings to review design. I mean, this is not, shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. You know, the, and I think from my memory, there were comments last week about design drawings that conflicted with each other, that weren't labeled, that were mislabeled. So I don't even know what we're voting on. It's not clear. And even more importantly, frankly, I've been a part of this process from the beginning, even more importantly, the public, someone a year, two, five, 10 years down the road will have really no record, no coherent, you know, picture of what it is that we approved. That's not acceptable to me.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, you know, guys, I mean, this is like, I don't know, this is permitting 101, you know, you do something, you say what it's going to be, the drawings are, I mean, I shouldn't even have to say this stuff, you know. So I just don't understand. I really don't believe that we've been given an actionable set of drawings to vote on, frankly. So, you know, and I, and I feel like I've politely hinted at that for two years and, you know, maybe I wasn't direct enough, but, you know, it's come to this and here we are. And, you know, you're drawing a line in the sand saying, no, we're not doing any more. And, you know, I'm saying, we're not there. And so could we be there? Sure. But, you know, if the good faith ended on April 14th, when you said, you know, hey, this is, this is it. This is our last set of drawings. We're going to skip out on design review, skip out on all the dialogue that we, you know, said to you guys, to the board that we were going to engage in, you said, no, no, we're done. I don't know. That doesn't give me a whole lot to work with.
I mean, as somebody that's been with the company for a little under a year, I've seen the process that everybody's been going through. It's been frustrating for both sides. We voice, you know, issues with our design reviewer from an early stage, nothing was done. As residents of Maynard, you guys talk about protecting the town. We are a part of your town and no one really stepped in for us. So we are doing the best we can financially. Substantial. And we want the same things you guys do. We want to have this project happen, but we don't know what else to do at this point. So I think the line is drawn, but there can be a positive outcome for it. If, if you're willing to work with us, we want to work with you. But the design reviewer, that it's tough.
We didn't even do design review on this project. I mean, he submitted comments and you didn't hardly respond. I mean,
Forgive me for interrupting, Mr. Chairman. That's out of line. It's not, it's not rough. I've done my job.
It was a very thorough review and I thought the response to it was inadequate, almost absent. It was almost just a complete denial of any, any, you know, comment of merit in the review. And, and, you know, and there was conversation for months about, oh, we're going to get to architectural elevations. We're going to get to landscape design. Let's do engineering first. I stuck my neck out for the applicant to say, okay, let's play along. And rather than go with my gut, which said, let's have an iterative conversation, looking at the entire project together, engineering and design. I went against that and said, okay, we'll entertain the applicant's desire to move forward with a calendar, a list of items in an order. And we got to three out of five and you pulled the rug out. So, you know.
I feel like we're spending a lot of time saying the same.
No, thank you. We're, I don't have much.
Can we determine how we're going to move forward from here?
We'll make a proposal.
Yeah.
Reissue in writing the items that the board would like to see. And that we'd like to see these for the next meeting. And we provide discussion on the conditions that we will, that we can add to, to a potential, so no vote. And for example, a condition could be that, and I know Bill Crenshaw is not going to like this, but a condition could be that we have a development agreement approved by the board at a later time. So that the board is in charge of approving the development agreement. So I just want to give them away to yes, and it's, it's simply going to be their risk moving forward if we have these additional cumbersome conditions that are applied. Can somebody explain to me the required votes on future condition approval?
We're not getting a vote on that tonight, right? So like at best, we're going to continue and see what is produced for the next meeting. So should we spend, you know, a lot more time going through details? Or should we see if we, you know, the sort of basic conditions are met to move forward?
I'm still understanding that the applicant does not wish to move forward. They want a open on decision tonight. I'm, I'm encouraging them to continue to, we can do, they've worked towards this because I really think we can manage it.
Well, this, you know, my point is we've had this discussion now for like half an hour. Let's move it to action, right? We provide reiteration of the request. Staff can do that offline, make sure that understanding is had. See what is produced for the next meeting and then we know, right? We can, we bandy words back and forth here. That gets us, you know, no matter what is said, we don't know what's going to occur. Let's flip the script, see what occurs and then go from there.
Which for the record is essentially more or less what we did for this meeting.
I agree. But, you know, last time, it wasn't, if, I don't miss my guess, wasn't the last iteration of this with Mr. Valise? And, you know,
Meeting and the last, I think, drawings that were submitted, I believe, was April 14th or 29th, something in that range.
I agree with all that, guys. I just think it's still in the town's best interest for us to continue to work as best we can.
Suggested. Continue. Staff to, you know, clarify this listing, see what happens. Because otherwise we're just talking.
Can I, excuse me, can I talk?
Certainly.
Yeah, but you got to keep it, you got to keep it in control.
We stopped in April 1st. We spent, you heard it 10 times now, $377,000. We, at that point, now it's over 400. We have no intentions of spending any more money, none. Now, if you want to vote, we'd really appreciate it. It would be by far the best thing for this town, by far. I've been here 51 years. I know the town, okay? And it's falling down around us and every other building is vacant. So we need it in town and we own a lot of property in town. So we want to have this building in town. So for you guys to say you don't have enough information in front of you, we didn't have a development agreement on 42 and we didn't have a lot of things that we had conditioned on 42. And you make a big deal about those little things that design on 42. You see the building we present you. You see the promenade, okay? We intend to spend no money until you vote. When you vote, when you vote, then we know we have these conditions that we have to go by. Crenshaw just said it. I got, I got a half an hour of other things. Well, so we come back to another meeting and Crenshaw's got a half an hour of other things. No, there's no more other things. We're two and a half years into other things. You think it's a long time and you're not paying. We know it's a long time because we are paying and we're paying and we're paying. And we made a decision that we weren't spending any more money. It might not be wise. But that's what we do. We're in business and we want this building more than you guys want it. Okay? It's not that hard to think, look, we'll make conditions that these guys have to live with. And the conditions are blah, 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 the same as we did with the engineering. Wayne has got a ton of things that he wants. We will change those things to make Wayne happy. Okay, he wants this, he wants that, he wants the other thing. You talk about the wall. The wall is the state. We have to satisfy the state for the wall. It's got nothing to do with you. It's the state. So make some conditions, say, yes, we'll vote on this with these conditions. And then we're all happy. We, you, it's not that you didn't do your job. You did your job, two and a half years of your job. Can't you see the applicant side of it? Can't you see the money? Can't you see the time? Can't you see the aggravation? Can't you see all this stuff? Do you want to see Gruber's bacon? How long has it taken? Six years? Do you want to see that bacon? It's just going to get worse. It's a fire trap. Do you want to see that for the next four or five years? We couldn't sell that for $200,000 tomorrow. You couldn't give it away because everybody knows you couldn't get a permit. Oh, McDonald couldn't get a permit, so.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I appreciate the sentiments with due respect. It's not the board's responsibility to manage your design fee. So, you know, is that relevant somewhat? And I have some sympathy, but, you know, it's just not at the center. I mean, I firmly believe what Bill was saying. We, and we are protecting the town's interests here legally. And for, for the future development of the town. I'm sorry, I'm digressing. We don't need to get into hyperbole and kind of broad topics. We need to decide what to do forward. What I'm hearing is that no more money will be spent on developing drawings. So maybe you'll get them done for free. We need some more drawings. We need updates to the drawings. And that's really what needs to happen, at least for my vote. So I'm, I'm happy to entertain a continuance. I, you know, I'm, I think that's fine. I think town staff has made it clear that they're willing to, you know, for the eighth time, reach out and clearly lay out eighth month, I don't know. You know, we all saw Bill Memzer's email. It has four pages of, you know, entries on correspondence over the last two and a half years. I mean, it's just getting ridiculous. So we'll do it again. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with hearing it again, whether it's next month, September, whenever. But man, you know, if, if a couple of weeks go by and I talk to Bill and I hear nothing, you know, I'm going to be really disappointed. I don't know what else I can do, really. But, I mean, I feel like I've stuck my neck out, you know, and so has Bill, other town staff to, to get this project, to give this project some life and it, you know, hasn't been reciprocated. So, how about, should we continue a month, end of August, two months, September? What do people?
Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are we supposed to ask for the continuance?
Well, we can continue if we want to, I think.
I don't know. You should check on it.
You can decide if you want to show up or not.
Last time you can, you're standing there on your own, but I'm not sure if you're legally allowed.
Mr. Chair, if, if whatever the board chooses here, what we can do, I will try to consolidate all the outstanding comments and I'll circulate them so we all are on the same page. And then I can put it together and then it would just be a list and they're either met or they're not. And I will, that's the best I can come up with. I think that would help and I'll help any way I can to meet whatever the board asks for to help the applicant meet them.
We lost Bill. I think we lost the end of your comment there. Maybe that was just me.
Oh, no, I just saying that I will, I will get together and I'll go through the outstanding comments and consolidate them in one, be happy to do it in one, or one document. I'll circulate it to us, the board. And we can provide it to the applicant and, and it certainly would give us sort of checklist. And if they go down the checklist, it should be sufficient. And if they don't, well, then we tried our best for that. I will help them find any information that they need or prepare anything they need that I can do. But I think that's the best, I think, the best course of action we could take right now. I think that the project is very, despite what has been said, you know, by the applicant. I think that the board does take this project very seriously and recognizes how important it is and how good it is for the town. There's no question about it. It meets so many, so many things are so right on and it seems like it's just getting the last couple of things. It just doesn't seem that it makes sense not to do it. That we can, we can create, absolutely right. It's a nice infill development, great for the waterfront access. It's fantastic for to have the affordable housing going. We have, it injects a life in the town. We have a connection between the rail trail and Main Street. There's all this good stuff. To me, as a planner, I mean, I've worked on this for however long on it, there's not that much left that can't be done. And if it's a good faith effort. And I, I really don't know what else I could do. I mean, I heard from all sides, all parties, done the best I can do to keep it going. And I'll, I'll try to get this, we narrow it down, we'll try to get that done. But I don't know, I can't do it if the applicant's not willing to make the continued effort. I mean, we're so darn close.
So, Bill, can you address the concern that the board does or does not have the prerogative to continue the hearing and set a future date?
Board can continue hearing anytime they want.
So out of courtesy to the applicant, is two months sufficient amount of time? One month, three months? It's really up to you. I'll run it by the board. Or it's, it's not up to you. I'm asking out of courtesy. To the applicant, any, any response there?
I think the applicant's on mute.
Mr. McDonald, do you care to respond or we will set our own date for continuance?
We don't care when you set. We, we're done. We're done. I don't know how much more clear we can be. We're done. You heard Bill going on and on for five minutes, how good this project was. If you can't see it, we're.
Are you withdrawing the application, Mr. McDonald?
Not doing anything.
I second the motion.
The, once again, the motion is to deny without prejudice, I believe. Is that?
That's correct.
Motion's been seconded. Ah, boy. Why without prejudice?
We put a lot of work into this project. If at some point in time the applicant changes his mind and wants to do the thing the way that you want it to be done, then he can enter in. that you want it to be done, then he can enter into it again. We put too much time and effort into it now.
If it's more utility to the work that's been done thus far to this, you know, if it's done without prejudice. It'd be, you know, more easily rescued.
Yes, that's correct, Andrew.
Thank you. Bill, can you clarify that a little bit? I mean, if, if it's denied without prejudice, then it sounds like the concept, many of the design drawings, et cetera, could be resubmitted and completed at a future date without any kind of baggage, if you will, of this hearing process?
Correct.
Any other comments from the board? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Andrew?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
I'm an aye. Guys, I'm sorry I came to this, I really am. Appreciate the effort and hopefully this.
Stop a submission in one month with new drawings is what I would say is the end result here.
Thank you. We have one more item on the agenda tonight. And that is a hearing, or not a hearing, a presentation, I believe, on chapter 61, right of first refusal. Katie, are you with us?
Oh, Katie was here a minute, oh, there she, yeah, she's there.
Sorry about that, froze for a second, what's up?
So moving on to agenda item five, the right of first refusal. I understand you've got a, a presentation for us.
Yeah, so I wanted to update you on this because per state law, the planning board is one of the entities required to comment on right of first refusal. So chapter 61 is a land conservation law, basically, where a property, a property's taxes are adjusted to be for the natural resource, the natural resource value versus like the developmental value. So currently, there's a property, Zero Parker Street, it's part of the Cuttings Properties, which some of you may know about, that it was in chapter 61 for forestry, I believe, and agriculture, but it's being taken out of that use because there's going to be a, or there's a proposed subdivision potentially coming. But because it's in chapter 61 when a use changes, the town has what's known as the first right of refusal to match that buyer's price to then acquire the property. And the planning board has the ability to send a letter to the board of selectmen giving their opinion. But I wanted to update you on what the cons comm's opinion on this is because the cons comm's really the only entity in the town that can purchase land without town meeting because it has special chapter 97 land purchase funds. And tonight, in executive session, the conservation commission determined that we would not go forward with the right of first refusal, just simply because the cost is too high and the developer is willing to donate the back either six or seven acres of the property. If we had the funds, we probably would have pursued obtaining it, though the price was kind of steep at 1.2 million, just because most of it, if not all of that property, is within the water supply protection district. And it just, overall, it's a sensitive habitat that in the past has actually had reports of endangered species habitat, though it lost that designation the last time they adjusted that map. But unfortunately, the cons comm can't go forward with the purchase and will be sending a letter to the board of selectmen stating that we are not interested in moving forward the right of first refusal. But it's, it's still kind of a win because instead of paying 1.2 million for that large property, the cons comm instead will be probably receiving that back parcel of land as a donation. So I figured I'd, you know, present this information to you. You still have the right to let the board of selectmen know that you're interested or the planning board is interested in its acquisition. But unfortunately, at this time, I don't think the town has the resources to acquire such a property.
Can I ask if the proposed donation is contingent on the expiration of the time of town action or is it contingent on approval of the subdevelopment?
So the developer actually sent a letter saying that they, he, he was interested in giving that back parcel to the cons comm. But through the subdivision process and through notice of intent process, because there are some lofty wetlands at the back of that property, it probably would have become some sort of requirement for land donation or like no disturbance area for that back area of the property.
I'm still not clear on when he's going to give it to the conservation commission.
Currently, it's not subdivided, so he will most likely give it after the A and R process is complete.
Could be not doing A and R on that site, pretty sure we did.
It was, it was another part of the site, actually. I think there wasn't a budding parcel, I think it was about a year, year and a half ago, that was combined into that, that parcel, making a larger parcel.
Okay, but you, you have a enforceable offer to give that land if the A and R goes through?
Do you mean in terms of his intent to donate?
Correct.
I mean, the, the letter isn't necessarily binding, but the cons comm, as part of the notice of intent process, can greatly urge the developer to donate.
Okay, Helen, have you explored other options to obtain the funding? I mean, have you met with the community preservation committee? And have you met with, you know, it's water supply protection, so that could be paid out of those enterprise systems?
So we only have 120 days to act upon it. Currently, the conservation commission only has about, I think, $280,000. And every grant opportunity, large enough to kind of help out with this. The timing's wrong. For instance, the land acquisition grant, that, that was actually due this week, but in order for us to apply, we have some outstanding issues regarding the conservation restriction required for the golf course and a few other minor issues that keep us from those grants. Plus, we wouldn't have been able to make the town meeting deadline anyway because a vote is required for that grant. And the water supply land acquisition grant, that's in January. So it's, it's like the stars didn't really align on this one.
I wasn't asking about outside grants, I was asking about current funds from the CPC and their borrowing authority and also the borrowing authority and, you know, funds available to the enterprise system.
So, I mean, we, we discussed at the cons comm meeting with John Dwyer, who's head of the cons comm, and he, he did not think that CPC was necessarily an option at this time.
Bill, this is Justin DiMarco, DPW director, I'm still on the line here. I can speak to the enterprise funding. At this time, we do not have the resources available, nor do we have the potential borrowing ability at this point based off of some of our other major capital improvement projects to acquire that land. And borrowing for that potential resource would require special town vote as well. So we're, we're kind of tough against the timeline here.
All right, I'm just thinking, you know, financing a million bucks is not a big lift on annual payment. But apparently, it has not been explored.
So I think we need to take some action. Bill, is that right? Bill Nemser? We need to give up our right of first refusal, I guess, if that's, if that's what we wish to do?
So, so you could, yeah, vote to give up your right of first refusal and issue a letter to the board of selectmen stating so? Or you can issue a letter saying you, would be for the right of first refusal because ultimately, it's the board of selectmen's choice?
So, all right, guys, well, it seems like we're not in a position to execute right of first refusal, and that this has been explored by others in the town, so any.
Can I just, can I ask a question? If we don't, does it preclude the selectmen from being able to make the determination either way that they choose?
If you don't issue a letter or, or.
Right, so it, it, my question is like, you know, I want to leave all doors open until they have to be shut. So how do we, you know, do, do, does the choice we make tonight preclude the action of others should some of the opportunity arise, you know, in the short window?
No, you could also choose.
The selectmen, oh, we could also choose nothing.
You could also choose not to comment, though oftentimes, that's seen as, you know.
Wishy-washy?
Yeah.
I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I mean, Bill raises issue that there may, you know, there are theoretical pathways out there. And why close it off? Why not allow the selectmen to make the determination, you know, as they see fit?
Yeah, that's, that's doable. There are about, I think we've gone through about a month now. So I think there's about 90 some odd days left on our right of first refusal. So there's still a little bit of time.
So Andrew, you.
I'm pretty sure the right of first refusal is after town meeting, right?
What was that?
The 120 day date is a few days after town meeting, correct?
I'd have to go back and look at the, I, I believe that's when we got it in. I'd have to go back and look at the, the date on the document. I think we're about a month into it.
Okay, so Andrew, you're suggesting that we kind of just punt and allow others to jump in if they have a clear pathway?
What I'm suggesting is, you know, I thought we had a binary choice, you know, and I wanted to kind of understand what that meant. And I didn't want to do something that would preclude, you know, someone else from being able to take advantage of an opportunity that, you know, we may not be aware of.
Mm-hmm.
All I was saying, why shut a door when you can leave it open, you know?
Sure. So to do so, would that be to?
Right, that's my question.
To, is to.
How do we do that, Katie?
To hearing or another agenda in, you know, a month and kind of give, we, Bill, I don't know, do we?
Or do we recommend that, you know, they pursue if they can? I mean, what are the options?
You, I mean, it's, it's not a, you know, it's, it's kind of a gray area, so you could make, you know, the statement that, you know, you understand that financing may be difficult, but, you know, if possible, it's, it's, it's not like a yes or no that they're really looking for.
I think that that sounds exactly right. We understand the financial constraints exist. If there turns out to be a pathway, take it.
Someone else wants to buy it, we wouldn't get in their way.
Right, I mean, but no, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, there, there is another option where the board of selectmen could give its right of first refusal to a, like a land, or like a land trust, like Subvery Valley trustees. But I talked, I spoke extensively with their land management department and they were, they unfortunately were not unable to, you know, buy the property as well, so.
Okay, so, all right, we got to wrap up, guys. What, what do we do, Bill? Help us out. We just direct Bill to send such a letter to the BOS that we're, you know, not that we're not interested in the preservation of this land, but we don't have the means and, and we wouldn't object to anyone else pursuing the property?
I think that, that makes sense and maybe we could even.
We actually recommend it if there was a way.
Right, right, and we could tie it.
And the financial constraints.
I could, between Katie and I, I could write a letter and, 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 you know, not just say, oh, we think you should buy it. Here's why we think it should be considered for purchase. Here's the objectives it's meeting, the, the, you know, and go through everything from the master plan to community development principles without being the most, but getting them, you know.
Town lands improves the 40B situation, right? Like, that's the other thing, it's always good.
Okay, well, I, I support that. Do we need to vote or is that just kind of a sentiment that we pass on to Bill?
Probably make it tidy, would, do you think, Katie? I mean.
If you guys want to, it, it would, you know, add to the record, I guess.
Okay. So I'd like to move that we direct the town planner to advise town or selectmen and others that we support the acquisition of said property that are unable within our own means to pursue it and would support any avenues that others would wish to pursue to acquire the property.
Second.
All in favor by voice? Aye.
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 So directed, Bill?
I will do it.
All right.
Hey, can Caitlin explain, is there actually two parcels coming out of chapter 61?
No, it's just one parcel currently.
Okay, because there's an exhibit in the letter from the owner showing two parcels, one at 13.3 acres and one at 1.8. Just curious if we want to get to 1.8 one.
Give me a second, I, sometimes when I'm on Zoom, my computer freezes up, so let me open up the exhibit.
Yeah, it does talk about a budding parcel.
I believe it's just the one that's the, the, the full parcel. It was about 13 acres of that full parcel through the property assessor's information.
Okay, so the large parcel is in chapter, the other one is not in chapter.
Yeah, the other ones, the other ones are not, just the large one. And I don't, I don't even think it was the entirety of that parcel that was actually in chapter 61. I think some of the property along the road was not within it, but it carries with the sale of the entire property, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we, we got to wrap this up, Bill. Do you?
I had moved to adjourn.
Yeah, that, that, that was a motion. Can we defer the?
All right.
Sorry?
I would, that, I said, that's fine. I was just giving the, the out if anyone wanted to seize it.
Um, let me just.
92nd town planner update?
No, 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 we don't have any town planner update really, no. Anything I do, I'll send you guys stuff, just please read what I send. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, one thing. Okay, you have to get these decisions, I got to get these decisions signed and these plans designed, signed. If you can, please, please, please come by the police station and sign them so I can get them recorded. Some of you have been, I've got stamps and stuff or whatever, but, but just please come in. I need to get that done. I'll bring them over.
Are these new, Bill, or old?
No, you, yeah, these are getting a little old. But, and I'll be happy to drive them over to anybody who needs it, you know, during the day, because I know a lot of you are home now. Just let me know and I can even bring them by to you to sign. But please, 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 please.
Bill will bring you lunch at, at the same time.
I will bring lunch.
So Bill, are you okay with my stamp or do I have to physically sign like the mileage or something?
I think you're okay with it, because I, I, I used your stamp, oh, no, I didn't, I can't remember, I think I did. Did you tell me to?
Couple times, for a couple of them, yeah.
If you, if you told me I did, and now I have a sealer that goes over it so you don't have a smear before.
Mr. Chairman, may I second Andrew's motion?
You may. All in favor, my voice?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to everyone for participating and, you know, hey, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Have a good evening.
Stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good night, all. Take care.
Thank you, everybody, thank you all.